It is 5:00 and I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. This is the time when we have the public address the council, but at this time I don't see anyone present. Therefore, I will have our city attorney give us the declaration of closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have 10 items this evening. I'll run through them as quickly as possible. Items A and E are related. They are existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. It is the SEC versus City of Victorville. The full case name and case numbers on the agenda. A is for the Airport Authority. E is for the City Council. Items B and C are two separate potential cases. These is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D4. Again, they are separate items. Items B and C are both anticipated litigation on behalf of the city. Item D is real estate, real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. Negotiating parties are Keith Metzler on behalf of the Airport Authority and Brian Parno on behalf of Sterling Development and FX Land out of the airport, all of which is set forth on the agenda. That is also an Airport Authority item. We then get to the City Council items. Covered item E already. Item F is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957.B and the position affected is city manager. Item G is existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. This is a undersealed case, therefore we cannot provide additional information as to the case itself. H is also existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.D1. Again, this case is Verizon California Inc. versus the State Board of Equalization and the case number set forth on the agenda. Item I is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 on behalf of the city and it's one potential case. And item J is one potential case pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. Again, this time it's on behalf of the Water District. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the 6:00 regular session.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay.
You're on live and running.
It's 6:03 and I call to order the meeting at the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. May we have a closed session announcement by city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had 10 closed session items this evening. Four for the Airport Authority. Existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. Items A and item B and C were anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.D4. Item C, sorry, item D was real estate negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. With respect to the litigation and the real estate, the parties to those transactions are all set forth on the agenda along with the case name. There is no reportable action with respect to those items. With respect to the City Council, we had five items. Again, item E was related to item A, existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. Item F was employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 54957.B. And items G and H were both existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495, sorry, And lastly, item I was anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. With respect to the City Council, there was also no reportable action. Lastly, we had an item for the Water District, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2. And there is no reportable action with respect to that. All of the case names, the real property descriptions are all set forth on the agenda.
Thank you. We will have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by President Mary Fisher of, I hope I pronounced this somewhat correct, Babim Bar Shal Mala. And after that, we will have the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Police Chief Sam Lucia.
Thank you. As a representative of congregation Babim Bar, the congregation prays that you use our resources wisely and well. You represent all members of our community fairly and you make decisions that promote the common good. We'd also like to share a prayer from our reformed Judaism liturgy. We pray that we might know before whom we stand, the power whose gift is life, who quickens those who have forgotten how to live. We pray for the winds to disperse the choking air of sadness, for cleansing rains to make parched hopes flower, and to give all of us strength to rise up toward the sun. We pray for love to encompass us for no other reason save that we are human, for love through which we all blossom into persons who have gained power over our own lives. We pray to stand upright, we fallen; to be healed, we sufferers. We pray to break the bonds that keep us from the world of beauty. We pray for opened eyes who are blind to our own authentic selves. We pray that we may walk in the garden of a purposeful life, our own powers in touch with the powers of the world. Praise be to God whose life is life, whose cleansing rains let parched men and women flower toward the sun. Baruch atah Adonai, mechayeh hakol. Pray as if everything depended on God, act as if everything depended on you. And let us say amen.
Let allegiance give the life of the United States of America and to the public for which
We do have one presentation of a proclamation. And this is the American Association of University Women, Victor Valley Branch, and I will come down and present it.
Oh, you're right here. On behalf of the Victorville City Council, we would like to present you with this proclamation in celebration of the 60th anniversary of the American Association of University Women. And thank you for your agency, support, and empowerment to young women in our community. Would you like to say something?
I just couldn't help be a little bit amused. I woke up this morning to learn that this is the 95th anniversary of the voting rights being given to women. And I come to this guest meeting tonight and who's sitting in the chairman's position? But we appreciate, A U W of Victor Valley appreciates most gratefully your honoring our 60th anniversary and our work in the community.
It's on.
It's on. I request our city clerk to present the agenda and any revisions for the record, please.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or on any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council and there are no revisions to tonight's agenda. And that's all I have. Mayor Garcia?
Thank you. We have non, appeal hearings, we have none scheduled for this evening. So we move on to item B, public hearings. This is continued from our July 21, 2015 meeting. I do have some cards, so I will call out the first name. And that's John Alvarez, what you can call.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Wait a moment, please. There's a clarification. Is this a continued hearing or a new public hearing?
This is a continued public hearing from the ordinance dealing with the vaping and including that, expanding the definition. The only thing that has changed is that there has been a slight cleanup item to eliminate ambiguity with respect to the smoking in the municipal golf course.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only change.
I did not have to open the hearing.
You already opened the public hearing. It's a continued public hearing, so you did exactly what needed to be done.
I do have to open the public hearing.
Yes, continued public hearing.
Okay. I do open the public hearing and I will take testimonies and I do have one card and the first one is John Alvarez.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is John Alvarez and I am a member of the High Desert Chapter of SFADA, the Smoke Free Alternatives Trade Association. Organization represents vapor businesses throughout the nation and I am also a vapor product business owner. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Victorville Vapor Business Owners in association, opposition to the current amendments you are discussing this evening. Let me be clear, vapor products are not tobacco products. Vapor products are a technology designed to be a less harmful alternative to traditional tobacco products. We are a community of Victorville residents who have found freedom from a lifetime of tobacco addiction. We do not desire to be around smokers, period, and would ask that you provide us our own classification. On July 27, a council meeting was held in the city of Costa Mesa where they agreed and created a new vape classification for its local businesses, recognizing that vaping is not smoking and it is not tobacco-related. Again, I stress vaping is not smoking. The amendments proposed here this evening will severely restrict the ability of smokers in Victorville to access this less harmful technology. Vapor products are not a health nuisance or threat. Instead, they should be viewed as the most promising pathway to significantly reducing health care costs associated with smoking-related illnesses that California has never seen. Recently, the county of Alameda praised the vaping community for its contributions to community health. Currently, the state of California is considering a number of bills in a special session of the legislature that would bring regulations to the vaping industry. At the same time, the FDA is also in the final stages of bringing regulation to the vapor industry that are expected to be issued by summer's end. I urge the members of this council to please stand down and allow the state and federal bodies to complete their work before rushing to a decision that could be devastating to the small business owners of this community. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. The next one is Jesse Segaro.
Good evening, councils. Nice to see you again. My name is Jesse Segaro. I am the Secretary Treasurer for the High Desert Chapter of SFADA. Our organization represents vapor businesses throughout the nation and I'm also a vapor product business owner as well. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Victorville Vapor Businesses, Business Owners in opposition to the amendments before you this evening. Since the recent rise in popularity, electronic vapor products have been scrutinized and attacked as a public health nuisance and a threat. Vapor products are not tobacco products. Vapor products are a technology designed to be a less harmful alternative to traditional tobacco combustive products. In fact, in a recent study by Professor Peter Hagic of the Wolfson Institute of Preventative Medicine at the London's Queen Mary University concluded that vapor products are up to 95% less harmful than combustible tobacco products. Smoking tobacco costs the state of California 18 billion in annual economic losses with roughly 9.8 billion going to direct medical costs. While California's smoking attributable mortality rate ranks better than the national average, 40,000 adult smokers in California die each year from combustible tobacco. While vapor products are not marketed as smoking cessation devices, a majority of scientific evidence conclude that vapor products help smokers stop smoking, which was concluded by a December 2014 study on behalf of the American Heart Association. Another recent pilot study by Dr. Ricardo Paloso, the Director of the Institute for Internal Medicine and Clinical Immunology stated that vapor shops are especially effective in helping smokers to convert to a less harmful alternative by switching to vaping with conversion rates as high as 42%. The amendment proposed here this evening will severely restrict the ability of smokers in Victorville to access this less harmful technology. Vapor products are not a health nuisance or a threat. The citizens of Victorville who frequently go to vapor shops or lounges do so by choice. Vapor shops are age-restricted stores that do not allow those under the age of 18 to sample or purchase vapor products, period. Many of these stores are registered participants in SFADA's Age to Vape Program. These vape shops are small businesses with a strong footprint in the Victorville community. They are owned not by big tobacco, but by entrepreneurs, many of whom have sunk their life savings into building their businesses. They pay taxes, they employ citizens of Victorville, and contribute to the community. These vape shops rely on their customers' ability to sample liquids before purchase. Stripping these shops of this process would be a death blow to many of these businesses that would inevitably result in a loss of jobs and tax revenues for the city. Currently, the state of California is considering a number of bills in a special session of the legislature that would bring regulation to the vapor industry. That's happening now. At the same time, the FDA is also in the final stages of bringing regulation to the vapor industry that are expected to be issued by summer's end. I urge the members of this council to please stand down and allow the state and federal bodies to complete their work before rushing to a decision that could be devastating to the small business owners of this community. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. The next one is Harold Hernandez.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Harold Hernandez and I will probably be touching on a few of the points that my esteemed colleagues have already brought forward to you. I am co-president of the High Desert Chapter of SFADA, Smoke Free Alternatives Trade Association. Our organization represents vapor businesses throughout the nation and I am also a vapor product business owner. And I am here tonight on behalf of the Victorville Vapor Business Owners in opposition to the current amendments that you're currently considering and possibly to enlighten on something because what we would really like to do is to have our own classification. As one of my colleagues mentioned recently in Costa Mesa, where I appeared also, the Costa Mesa was able to see that vapor products and agreed that they're not tobacco products. We do not want to be co-joined with any tobacco products. Most of us are extremely grateful and thankful that we are freed from tobacco products. We don't want to be classified with them or put in their category in any way, shape, or form. We're not hookah and we're a different technology completely. And as they had mentioned lately, vapor products have been scrutinized and lambasted as public health nuisance and/or threat, and nothing could be farther from the truth. Trying to classify vaping with tobacco products really isn't logical. It's about as similar as a doctor's office to a massage parlor where the only association is that one might remove their clothing while in the establishment. We are a group of people who, for whatever reasons being, have managed to find freedom. Most of us have lost our parents. I mean, I'm someone's child. I also have been freed from tobacco. I lost parents, relatives, and everything to cancer. Vaping has come along and just as, you know, a lot of us are addicted to caffeine, the nicotine that I'm able to derive out of a vapor product seems to satisfy me enough and I'm no longer just condemned to having to consistently smoke cigarettes. If we end up in the same classification as tobacco, that means that soon we'll end up being put in the same area with people that are smoking. And I must stress to you that we do not want to be with people that are smoking. I fully understand and agree that, you know, vaping may and probably should because it seems to be, it's not really understood by the public and we maybe should be not vaping in public, excuse me, public areas? And I understand that. But if you make the decision to classify us with tobacco products tonight, every ordinance in time that you look at this, from here on out, will be in that classification and we really don't want to be that. We're a community. We're a community that has sprung up and we're tight and we're close and it's something that I've never experienced in anything else other except maybe a group of people and another organization that I'm in. And we're not, we're not like the normal things. We're not pot smokers. We're not anything like that. We're not, you know, people with smoked cigarettes don't come together and we sure as heck don't come together to smoke hookah. And I would just ask that you might give us a little bit of consideration and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I do not have any other cards. Therefore, I will be closing the public hearing and I will request council members' comments.
Mayor Garcia, yeah, I have a couple of comments. In my understanding of the ordinance, and I'll ask our city manager or city attorney to just clarify this for me, this is specific to city facilities, city parks? This does not prohibit someone from smoking or vaping at their own private residence or anywhere else in the city that's within? This basically would cause the regulation to follow the existing regulation that we have in place when it comes to smoking a cigarette within so many feet of a public facility. Am I incorrect on that?
No, that's correct. It effectively applies the same standards as smoking. Doesn't mean that we're saying it's the same thing as smoking, but effectively the public areas, you would no longer be able to use vapor products or any kind of e-cigarette product.
Right. And then I guess my other question would be, and this would go to Captain Lucia, you know, assuming you saw someone smoking a cigarette in a city park or drinking a beer or something else, you know, that goes against our ordinances as well. Wouldn't you do something at that point in time? Okay. So this doesn't really change anything that we do currently. I think there's a lot of misinformation out there that there's this belief that all of a sudden we're going to somehow outlaw vaping. That's not, we're not outlawing vaping at all. In fact, all we're doing is having it coincide with what we already have in place. No one's allowed to smoke within so many feet of a public facility or in public parks or any other public facility. This would just bring that in, into compliance with that. That doesn't mean that you can't do it at your own house or you can't do it while you're walking down the street. And so there's, when I hear public testimony tonight, I think you actually believe that we're actually outlawing it and that's not what's actually occurring. So I'm not asking for rebuttal. I'm just telling you what I read here, that's not what's happening tonight. That's my.
I think there are actually two ordinances. The one we're dealing with first is the limitation of these activities in parks, recreational areas, that sort. My question, the other one might have an impact on business, but not on any existing businesses. It only impacts future businesses, if I'm understanding, be too correctly. We're not going to shut down any businesses. We're not going to tell people what they can and cannot do, except in public parks. My question is, why have we extended that to parking lots? Isn't it acceptable for people, if they're not going to smoke in the park, at least smoke, vape, whatever, they could go to a parking lot and do it? I mean, somehow that one...
That was a question I had. It's a prohibition in the parking lot, but is this recreational area parking lots or public parking lots?
No, recreational area parking lots.
But not.
The current...
Moscow parking lot.
What this does is it applies what's already on your books and puts vaping into that same category. Where smoking is currently prohibited, vaping would be prohibited in those areas of retail stores, pharmacies, childcare facilities, elevators, public restrooms, public areas, museums, galleries, libraries, theaters, retail food, marketing establishments, polling places, those types of things, public transit, and again, publicly-owned recreation facilities. So what you're doing is just, you are expanding the definition of smoking to include vaping and it would be subject to those same current restrictions that are already on your municipal code with respect to where you can and cannot smoke. Again, you can smoke in your own home, you can smoke in your own private places.
Mayor have three comments. I did want a correction on parking lot because recreational areas and parking lots, I didn't know if that was all parking lots or not.
The code right now has parking areas adjacent to basically city parks and all the city facilities.
That'll clarify that and I hope it's in the ordinance that's clear. Secondly, we have individuals...
Oh, we're, public hearings closed.
You don't run this. We have all kinds of comments that it's safe, it's not safe, it's kind of like global warming, yes it is, no it isn't. We have all kinds of information that contradicts the other information. And I agree that it would be really good if the state would answer this, but they won't and we as an area based upon the people we represent can't wait on the state. Under the discussion that we've had and the information that we have, we need to approve this. But I'm very open, if the state takes a different turn, that we open it and discuss it again if there's evidence to show that it is not as dangerous as we have been told that it is. But based upon the information that we received, I think that we have an obligation for the health, welfare of the citizens to prohibit it. And I think we're caught in a catch-22, so based on all the information... So based on all the information that I have, I'm not going to simply close the door. If it raises the issue later, or there's evidence contrary, I'm for discussing it again, but we do have to vote on it tonight.
Anyone else?
I would...
Just one last. I think from an enforcement standpoint, it's virtually impossible for any attempt to enforce these ordinances to distinguish the different kinds of things people might be breathing in and, I mean, it's not smoking, I'm not sure what it is, but I don't know how we could enforce it if we made, if we made exceptions for different kinds of things. So I think we need to go forward.
Mayor, I would ask that we introduce the ordinance 2331.
I'll read the title. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, amending chapter 6.14, Smoking, section 6.14.010, definitions.
For adoption and waiver for the reading?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McAcorin, second by Mr. Kennedy, to waive further reading and introduce the ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
We move on to item B2.
Just wanted to comment that Mr. Mayor pro temp to respond to your comment about the state. Certainly, if the state creates some designation different from smoking at some point, staff will certainly take a look at that and potentially bring it back if it merits review again of this ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you. Item B2, extension of urgency interim ordinance number 2342, as set forth in urgency ordinance number 2344, entitled, "An Extension of the Urgency Interim Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville Pursued to California Government Code, Section 65858, imposed in a moratorium on certain problematic uses." I opened the public hearing, and I do not have any cards for anyone to address the council at this time. So I will close the public hearing.
Just a question. This is an extension of the urgency interim ordinance. When are we going to get to a point where this is no longer an extension?
This extension lasts for 90 days per its terms, and what is, what this is doing is basically preventing these activities until the regular ordinance, which I think's already had its first reading, becomes effective, which is not until the first meeting in October, I believe is the...
It's actually on consent tonight. The permanent ordinance is on consent tonight, so...
Comes effective 30 days from tonight.
Effective 30 days from then, so we won't have to...
We won't have to do this again. And any motion to approve this, I would request that you also accept the written report, which is part of this agenda item.
Any comments from council members?
The mayor has read the interim urgency ordinance, correct? I move that we accept the report and adopt urgency interim ordinance number 2344.
And waive further reading as part of the motion.
And waive further reading.
A quick correction, 2342.
2342, sorry about that. 2342.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McAcorin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye.
All those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item B3, general plan amendment, DEV 15-00005, as set forth in proposed resolution number 15-058, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Approving General Plan Amendment, DEV 15-00005, An Amendment to the Circulation Element of the General Plan With a Negative Declaration To Allow For the Delision of Sycamore Street Between Amarcosa Road and the Oregon D. Wash. Wash Road From Bear Valley Road South Along the State Highway Die to Amarcosa Road and Wash Road From Bear Valley Road North Along the Oregon D. Wash To Amarcosa Road, City of Victorville." I don't have any, I opened the public hearing at this time, and I do not have any cards. Therefore, I will be closing the public hearing and requesting council members' comments.
No comment, but I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McAcorin, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Garcia, if I might, going back to item B2, the motion for the urgency ordinance, actually, the ordinance number is 2344. You had it right the first time, so I'd like to have the record reflect hopefully that your motion was pertaining to ordinance number 2344. The other number was actually the first interim ordinance.
Thank you for the correction.
Okay. Sorry, I was looking at the subject on the actual item says 2342, so I don't know if there's any cleanup that needs to happen as a result of that, or if we're okay.
As long as that's your understanding, you mentioned the first correct one, so the record will reflect that that's the correct ordinance.
Thank you. B4, proposed ordinance number 2343, is that the correct number for that one?
Yes, it is.
Titled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville Adding a New Chapter 13.65 To the Title 13 Of the Victorville Municipal Code Relating to Stormwater and Urban Runoff Management and Discharge Control." I don't have any cards, so I opened the public hearing, and I will take, actually, I don't have any cards, so I will have, this one will be continued to our September 15, 2015 regular city council meeting.
You'll be hopefully have a motion to continue, yes.
I'll move for continuance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McAcorin, second by Mr. Cox, to continue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item B4 will be continued to September 15, 2015. Next, we have our consent counter. These can be, items C1 through C18 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be removed for discussion.
Ms., Madam Mayor, I think there's one, maybe not, maybe it's on the other. No, I'm sorry. No questions.
Do we have any motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McAcorin, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to written communications. Council appointment of voting delegate and alternates to the League of California Cities 2015 Annual Business Meeting, General Assembly. We need a delegate and an alternate. My understanding is that council member, Mr. Ryan McCochran, is, are you attending as a delegate or as an alternate?
Well, I'll actually be at the conference, but I have to leave on Friday morning for a family reunion, so if anybody else is looking to attend, we do need someone to be a voting delegate in the afternoon on Friday, so if anyone else would like to attend. Just as a note, in our fellow cities in Sperry and Apple Valley, a majority of their council members attend. In recent years, I've been the only one that's attended from the city, so I'd welcome anyone else to attend with me.
Thank you.
Content.
Mr. Councilman and mayor and council, I'm attending this year for the first time in several years. I don't know what my schedule is, but if you're not going to be there on Friday, the council could name me as a delegate, and I believe Mr. Messler is planning on attending as well. He could be an alternate unless one of you wants to go in our stead. I think if any of you tried to go at this point, we may have problems with hotel reservations, but we can make it happen if somebody wants to go.
I do have Mayor Pro Temp, Jim Cox, he is already signed up to go.
Oh, okay.
And myself. The only thing I need to know is if Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, Cox, wants to be the delegate.
No, I'd rather not, I'd rather the mayor be the delegate, and I would request that the city council appoint our mayor, Gloria Garcia, as the voting delegate. Question before I make a commitment on the alternate, does it have to be a council member or an elected official, or can the council appoint also a staff member? Does anybody know that?
Staff member can be appointed.
We've had staff members appointed in the past.
All right. Well, tentatively, if it's acceptable, I will, at this point, agree to be the alternate member.
And the mayor will be the delegate.
I can assure you that the matters before you that you vote on will be of the utmost importance to the City of Victorville.
Dripping with sarcasm.
I know today.
One option for the council, noting Mr. McAcorin's comment there, you can have multiple alternates, so you could actually name Mayor Garcia as a delegate and the rest of us that are going as alternates, and maybe one of us will stick around long enough to vote.
Yes, that we do.
Oh, good idea. Good idea.
That'd be the motion, so you'll be the delegate, Jim, you'll be the alternate.
Okay.
The other scope.
Eric, do you want to go?
Eric. No, thank you.
We'll have Doug and Keith as the second and third alternate. That'll be my motion.
I'll take it then.
Motion by Mr. McAcorin, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now we have item D2, release of land division improvements, improvements, construction agreement, County of San Bernardino. And Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
The recommendation would be that the city council approve the release of the land division improvements, construction agreement with the County of San Bernardino.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McAcorin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
D3, appointment of alternative representative for the Oversight Board of the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority. Madam Clerk, would you please read the recommendation?
The recommendation is that the city council appoint C. Eric Ray Airport Division Head as the alternate representative to Doug Robertson, city manager, for the Oversight Board of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency and the Victor Valley Economic Development Authority, VDA.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second with a question to the attorney. Did I understand from some time ago, the attorney indicated that none of the council members can sit on the Oversight Board?
Probably a conflict because you are the successor agency. The Oversight Board then reviews your activities. It's the same rationale that I could not be the attorney to the Oversight Board.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Motion by Mr. McAcorin, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, award of contract, Exero, I hope I pronounced this correctly, Exero Technologies. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
The recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve a service provider agreement with Exero Technologies to provide water locating services in an annual amount not to exceed $125,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D5, award of contract, Victor Concrete Inc., and I do have one card. Madam Clerk, will you read the recommendation, and then I'll call up the gentleman.
Recommendation is that the city council approve the award of a construction contract to Victor Concrete Inc. in the not-to-exceed amount of $369,000 for concrete repair and/or replacement services for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Thank you. Kathleen Granil.
My name is Kathleen Granil, and I am representing Victor Concrete Inc. We went through the bidding process here with you guys for Victorville, and this is our second go-round for this particular bidding process. We do all the search, the bonding info, the insurance, the DIR number, the EIA number, and contractor's number. Any other documents the city requires for the bidding process, we fulfill. We use and we locate vendors for our suppliers that are local, such as our Home Depots, our Lowe's, our hubs, High Grade, et cetera, you name it. Victor Concrete Inc. and its staff is responsible enough to obtain all information for this bidding process and this project that we are taking action in and prepared for bidding. We researched the prevailing wage rates, the fuel costs, and the materials, which in any interest you should do as a responsible contractor. With that being said, we are not responsible, or should the public be responsible nor the council for those that do not bid during this allotted time permitted to bid for these contracts. All contractors are given a fair chance and a fair bidding war for these projects and these contracts. We contractors must take action and proceed to do proper procedures as you well have chosen for us to do the second time around, because this was disputed. And we did all the walks that you've asked of us to do, and we submitted to every, we've submitted everything you've asked thus far.
I have 30 seconds.
And all we are asking, as in the business, that we've been in this business for over 30 years, we're professional contractors in concrete, and that someone is refusing to bid and take the proper bidding actions, and we ask that you respect the fact that we are taking the responsibilities as contractors in bidding and walking through protocols as contractors and negotiating the right way as you have asked us to the second go-round, and that you take that into consideration, and that we look forward to working with you on this public project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item D6, Verizon Communications Cell Tower Sublease.
Need an action on that item.
We need an action.
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me.
The staff recommendation, the Honorable City Council approve the award of a construction contract to Victor Concrete Inc. in the not-to-exceed amount of $369,000 for concrete repair and/or replacement services for fiscal year 2015-16. I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McAcorin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D6, Verizon Communications Cell Tower Sublease and Lease Back. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council approve consent request from Verizon Communications Inc. to authorize a sublease and leaseback of the cell tower facility at 15182 Ellevato Street to American Tower Corporation.
I, just a question for our city attorney. You know, I have a Verizon phone, my iPad's connected to Verizon, my entire firm does business with Verizon Wireless. Do I have a conflict of interest there?
You would be treated as the public generally exception because a lot of us have that, so this is so...
I have everything through Verizon.
Everything's through Verizon.
This is so remote, your interest is so remote, it would not create any conflict of interest.
Want to make sure that we get that on the record.
Andre, that's probably not true of my telephone bill. It might break the company if...
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McAcorin, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D7, opposition of AB 113 is set forth in resolution 15-060, entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Approaching AB 113." Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council adopt resolution 15-060 opposing AB 113, authorizing the... authorizing the mayor's signature on the letter of opposition, directing staff to forward Resolution 15-060 to the city's state legislators and to the League of California Cities.
I don't have any cards. Have a motion?
This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville opposing AB 113, Resolution Number 15-060, all move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
D eight. Award of Contract Merrill Johnson Companies. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, please.
Actually, if I, if I might interject, my firm does business with Merrill Johnson, so I'm going to abstain on this item.
Thank you.
The recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve a consultant professional services provider agreement with Merrill Johnson Companies for water capital improvement program engineering services in an amount not to exceed $289,270.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. McEckern absent.
Item D nine. Mortgage Assistance Program Case Number 15-07-01 Hernandez. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, please.
Recommendation is that the City Council approve Mortgage Assistance Program Case Number 15-07-01 Hernandez in an amount not to exceed $49,500.
Move for approval. Second.
I have a comment, Madam Mayor. Some time back, we talked about the loans or the grants to fix up housing. And at that time, there was quite a bit of discussion in regard to this program. I think we had an agreement, although we've been very busy, that we would have a study session and be briefed on all the programs that we have for low, low and moderate income, for repair, for rehab, and for down payment. We haven't had that, and I think we should. We're all concerned about housing and the cost of housing, and I don't know anyone that's opposed to assistance for housing. But I, but I'll read this comment that the purpose for this is to make the dream of homeownership a reality. But $49,000 out of $160,000 purchase, to me, appears excessive, because we could actually, if we'd had the study session, I would have proposed that, that gap payment not exceed $16,500. We're actually making the gap, not making a third of the down payment, and three families, instead of one, could receive the, the dream of homeownership. I want to get that on the record, because we haven't had that session, because this has already moved along, and, yeah, I'm for it, but not at that amount. I'm going to abstain, because I think that this City Council deserves to have a study session with a complete discussion. I'm not asking the council to continue this, this is already here. But before we face it again, that we have that opportunity for council to discuss it, and our policies, it's up to the council, it's their call, it's simply my request.
There's a motion by Mr. McEckern, a second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Those opposed? None opposed, the motion carries with Mr. Cox abstaining.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, just to address those comments, staff is actually planning on holding a study session. We've been delayed in doing so, and I certainly recognize that we've intended to do that with you. Staff has been working towards resolving a number of issues as it relates to all of the housing programs, and we do intend to bring something back to you, hopefully, in the fall, to where we're actually rectified a number of the programmatic issues that we've had. We've had a lot of inconsistencies between the variety of different programs and funding sources. So, we're trying to clean that up, we're pretty close, and then what we do intend to do is effectively bring something back to you that summarizes all of the different housing programs, the different funding sources. And ideally, what I'm trying to do is, is come up with some recommendations for you as to perhaps more strategic uses of those funds for, for, for our goals.
Thank you. Any questions? Item D ten. Untreated Water Delivery Service Agreement, HDPP. And I do have one card. Madam Clerk, can you read the recommendation, please?
The recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the untreated water delivery service agreement between the Victorville Water District and High Desert Power Trust.
Thank you. Bradley.
Heisey. Mayor Garcia, members of the council, my name is Bradley Heisey. I'm a senior vice president with Tenaska Capital Management, and represent the owners of the High Desert Power Project located here in Victorville. We appreciate all the work that's been done to date by the City of Victorville and Victorville Water District to bring this contract forth for your consideration. I hope we'll see your support of High Desert Evidence tonight with the vote to approve this contract. Again, thank you for your historical, current, and continued support of the High Desert Power Project. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a motion or any questions?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries with Mr. Negretti abstaining.
Item D eleven. Universal Designation of Apkins Agent Cal EMA. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
The recommendation is that the City Council approve execution and submittal of Cal EMA Form 130 in order to pursue reimbursement of losses due to any disaster or cost recovery actions over the next three years.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D twelve. Sewer Master Plan Update and Sewer Connection Fee Study. Madam Clerk, can you read the recommendation?
This is an information item only, and staff will be updating the City Council on the progress of the sewer master plan update and sewer connection fee study, being prepared by David Evans and Associates.
Thank you. This is just the presentation, so no motion is to be taken. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, members of the City Council. I just want to give a very brief update on the sewer master plan study that's been underway. We are required to update the master plan from time to time. It's a requirement of the State Water Board, and this study has been underway since early this year, in January. And there are a number of tasks that are ongoing, some have been completed, some still need to be completed. One of those is to update our sewer atlas, there have been some new sewers installed the last few years, so we're updating that in GIS. There's also a TV inspection that's going to be done for some of our high maintenance lines, they take quite a bit of our time for our maintenance staff to take care of, so we hope to remedy some of those problem areas that will reduce the likelihood of overflows. And the other thing we are doing is we're going to update our sewer model, we're going to rerun hydraulic model, so that we will be able to identify current problem areas and future areas where we might need larger pipes, more pipes in the future to accommodate growth. And from that, we'll develop a capital improvement plan, both a short-term one for five years and a long-term one. And the result of that will be looking at the future growth of the city, and also revisiting our sewer connection fee, which is basically a development impact fee for new development. That hasn't been reviewed since 1991, and so we intend to come back with you with that study in December is our target date. I can't tell you what the result will be yet, because we haven't gotten that far into the study. But when we do have that study, we'll present some options to you based on our review. That's, I just wanted to let you know what we've been doing, and expect us to return in a few months. That's my presentation, and I'm open for questions.
Brian, did you say that the connection fee has not been reconsidered since 1991?
That's right.
Wow. Graduated from high school. Just saying.
And now you're old, so it's been a long.
Is that typical, I mean, do we wait that long to revisit these things?
Typically, you wouldn't wait that long, sometimes five years can go by, 10 years can go by, but typically, you wouldn't wait that long of a time.
Just a matter of information, we have a similar issue with a drainage assessment as well, that we're trying to work through, very similar timeframe, I think maybe a couple of years newer, but still early 90s.
Very well could be that those fees are still appropriate, that would surprise me, but it's possible. So, we.
I, I can't even give an opinion on that right now, but we'll come back, and we'll let you know what.
When, when do you expect to come back on that, Brian?
December, our target date is to return in December.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. D thirteen. Workshop Presentation of Water Rate Study Structure Options. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
This is also an informational item, MBS will be presenting options for the structure of water rates resulting from a water rate study that has to meet the needs of the water district, given the recent San Juan Capistrano Appeals Court ruling, and given the recent mandate by the governor on water conservation.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council, I just wanted to introduce Kim Baylor, she's with MBS, she's a consultant selected for our water rate study. And she has a not-so-short presentation tonight for you, so it is a very detailed, complicated process, it has a lot of moving parts, so we'll be open to any questions you have, and Brian's here, and I'm here as well, to answer any questions on the city technical side of things. So, we'll get this going.
Hi, good evening, as Mr. Matthews mentioned, my name is Kim Baylor, I'm a consultant with MBS. We were hired to do the water rate study for the district. I've been with the firm about 10 years, I've done about 70 rate studies over the past six years. We're working with a lot of agencies in the area, and throughout the state of California, particularly with the state's conservation mandate, and in light of the recent San Juan Capistrano Court ruling, implementing conservation, conservation-oriented rate structures is becoming a lot more difficult, so we're working with a lot of agencies on this right now. I've done some work in the area for Cucamonga Valley Water District, the City of Colton Desert Water Agency, we're working with the City of Pasadena right now, so we have a lot of clients in the local area that we're working on these issues with. So, I'm going to get into the presentation right now. So, the slide up here just shows an overview of what I'm going to talk about tonight. I'm going to talk about the tasks and objectives that we're doing in this rate study, some background on the district. I'm going to go over the financial plan and revenue requirements analysis, the outcomes of that analysis, and what our recommendations are. We've also prepared a couple of financial plan alternatives for you to consider, and then I'm going to go over the cost of service analysis and some rate design options for consideration, and then just talk about the next steps in this process. So, there are three primary, primary components of a rate study. Whenever an agency embarks on, you know, doing a comprehensive analysis of, of their rates, it starts with the financial plan and revenue requirements analysis, and this is where we look at all of the agency's revenues and expenses, all of the operating expenses to run the utility, what are our planned capital expenses for the next five-to-10-year period, or whatever the capital improvement program plan, the long range, however long the term is of the current financial plan. Also look at cash, how much cash the utility has in reserves, and what is recommended according to industry standards. And once we figure out the financial picture of the utility, then we move into, how do we break down the total revenue requirements by all of the utility's customer classes? How, how should we be collecting revenue from each customer class? So usually, that's based on how many connections you have from each customer class, what are the meter sizes for each connection, and how much water each customer class is using. And finally, once we figure out how much we need to collect from each customer class, then we figure out what's the best way to do that, what's the best rate structure? How should we bill our customers for, for water sewer service, in this case, water? I'm going to be going over all three elements of that, of the rate study here tonight. I'm just going to go over a couple of brief slides on some district background. Whenever we start a rate study, we like to know if the utility or the agency has any policies related to rate setting, financial planning, anything like that. And so, the district, district staff provided us with the mission, mission statement and goals from, financial-related goals from the district's vision statement. And so, we took these into consideration in the course of the study. And some core value questions that are part of the district's vision statement are here on the slide.
Real quick question is, are those, is the mission statement the district's vision, are those city or previous water district? And we have two water districts that we took over, so which water district would it be?
That's actually the vision statements for the former Victor Valley Water District.
And so, I have a slide up here that shows the historical water rates for the district since fiscal year 2008, 2009. So, in 2009, 10 is the first time there was, there was a 9% rate increase from '08, '09, and then four years without any rate adjustment. In fiscal year 1415, there was a 4% rate increase implemented. So, there was a, just to show a five-year projection of what the historical rates are for the district. Now, I'm going to get into the financial plan and revenue requirement analysis and go over our findings and recommendations that we've made there. So, the major finding that we made is current rates aren't sufficient going forward for a number of reasons. First, projected costs are increasing due to general cost inflation. So, staff has provided us with a number of inflation factors that we've applied to the district's expenditures, budget expenditures. So, general and labor cost inflation is 2% per year, based on historical inflation. Fuel costs are rising by approximately 3% per year. Utilities or electricity cost is going up by approximately 5% per year, and that was provided by Southern California Edison. We also have some significant increases in, in source of supply costs. So, purchased water costs are going up by approximately 6.5% per year. Groundwater replenishment assessment and makeup obligation costs are going up by 8% per year. And those two factors were provided by Mojave Water Agency. And then we have our groundwater assessment, and that's going up, that cost is going up by approximately 2% per year. So, this is, you know, general costs go up every year, it's pretty simple to understand. We also have a need to fund capital improvements, so rehabilitation, replacement costs. And the current plan for the district is approximately $55.6 million for fiscal year 1516 through 2324. And so, I have a couple of slides that'll show you the projects that would be funded, and, you know, where, where the costs are lying. We also need to correct annual deficits, deficits in reserve fund balances, and make sure there are sufficient funds for the district going forward. So, we need to maintain sufficient reserve fund levels to appropriately, appropriately address expenditure levels, you know, cash, cash in and out. Reserve fund balances go up and down throughout the year and over time, and so we want to make sure that the district has sufficient funds available for the next five to 10 years. We also need to meet the state's 28% conservation mandate, and current water rates aren't sufficient to absorb a 28% reduction in water use. So, that alone is going to require an increase in, in rates. So, up here, I have a slide that represents the financial forecast for the district for fiscal year. fiscal year 1516. So this upcoming fiscal year, we have a total of $22.7 million in operating expenses budgeted. We have $8.5 million of capital expenditures planned. And current rate revenue and other miscellaneous operating revenues total $23.6 million. So there's a funding gap of a little over $7.5 million when we look at all of our revenues and expenses, where the money's going. And if there was a single increase in rate revenue, it needs to be 24% in order to cover that entire deficit. This slide up here shows a projection of cash balances if there were no increase to rates in the next several years. We're starting fiscal year 1516 with a little over $15 million in reserves. And by the end of fiscal year 2018, 19, we'd be projected to be out of cash if we maintained our current expenditure level for operating and capital expenditures. And so at that point, we've assumed in this analysis, in this graph up here, that capital expenditures would drop off. But there's only a couple years' worth of reserves if no adjustment to rates is made. And so we've made a couple of recommendations with regard to the water district's financial plan in this study. We've recommended some minimum reserve fund targets, and these are consistent with industry standard. We'd like to see you maintaining these reserve fund levels at a minimum. So an operating reserve, we'd like to see the district holding 90 days' worth of operating expenses in an operating reserve. And that's $5.6 million in fiscal year 1516. We'd also like to see the district holding funds in a capital reserve, which would be intended to be used for emergencies and pay for capital projects and just to have a cash resource available for capital. We would recommend a minimum of holding 3% of net assets in a capital reserve, and that's $5.3 million in fiscal year 1516. And we've made, we've prepared two financial plan scenarios for the district to consider on how to increase rate revenues in order to meet all of its requirements. We, so we have the five-year projection of increases in rate revenue represented in this table up here. We have alternative one, and it would be a flat 7% increase for the next five years. And then we also prepared a second alternative where there would be an initial, a larger initial increase of 20% in fiscal year 1516, followed by inflationary level adjustments or 2.5% per year for the following four years. So just two financial plans for the district to consider. And I'm going to go over the details of each financial plan up ahead. So district staff has also provided us with a capital improvement program. It's a 10-year forecast of capital improvements for the district for last fiscal year 1415 through fiscal year 2425. So this slide up here shows the past five years of capital expenditures in the light blue bars across the screen for fiscal year 2010, 11 through 1415. So the average level of capital expenditures in the first, or prior, I'm sorry, prior five years was approximately $2.5 million. Going forward for the next 10 years, starting in fiscal year 201516, the average level of expenditure is a little over $6 million per year. So the total capital improvement program I mentioned earlier is $55.6 million that the district has planned right now. The funding gap, if we look at the average level of expenditures for the past five years compared to the next 10 years, it's a funding gap of approximately $3.5 million per year if we look at the average level of expenditures. And the slide up here shows a list of the district's planned capital improvements. It's a total of $55.6 million. It lists the actual project and the year that the project is scheduled for completion. And I'd like to highlight the largest expenditure in the district's capital improvement program, and that's pipelines. The total cost is projected at $44.8 million for the next 10 years. And that represents 81% of the district's total capital improvement budget. So that's the most significant cost by far is replacing pipelines for the district. Some other larger expenditures are the vehicle and truck replacements, but it's only 6%. And then you can see everything else is less than that as a percentage of the total cost. So now I'm going to get into explaining the two financial plan alternatives that we've prepared in this study. In the first one, alternative one, so this is the alternative where we would have the flat 7% increases for five years. This table up here shows a representation of the sources and uses of funds for the water utility for the next five years. So we have rate revenue, current rate revenue at a little over $22 million is what the utility's bringing in right now. And we have non-rate revenues of $1.5 million and then some minor interest earnings. And when we compare that to operating expenses of $22.7 million, and then we have our rate-funded capital. So the district has a total of $8.5 million in planned capital improvements for 1516. We're projecting, needing to use $3 million in rate revenue to fund those projects. And the other $5 million would be projected to come from reserves.
Ms. Bollmer, I'm going to stop you right here. This particular slide, I've been through all the slides. This particular slide seems to me to be the critical body of information that drives everything.
Right.
And it's the revenue and expense piece. Did you spend any time actually reviewing the water district budget for 201415?
I did. We did. We looked at the budget for 1415 and 1516, and then going forward the next 10 years. We actually have a 20-year projection.
Maybe you could explain to me then why, in this projection, I'm focused on the left-hand column, your rate revenues total $23.5 million. But in the actual Victorville Water District budget, the projected rates from services are $28.8 million and total revenues are $30 million in the budget I'm looking at.
Well, we were provided with another document from district staff.
All I know is this is the budget we all approved. And the water district projects $28.8 million. They had actual revenues in 14 and 25. Expenses are probably another subject, but those revenues that this entire projection is built on seem to me to be so far off the mark.
Mr. Kennedy, I don't know this to be the case, but maybe this will help, Kim. I know that this plan is based solely on the rate and operational revenues, not based on total revenues. So some of the other revenues that would not be in this study would be any capital fees, any...
I'm just looking at charges for services.
Right.
$28.8 million.
Right. I can't answer you tonight, but we said we'll take a look.
And before we go any further, I've got to tell you, because I spent some time today, at the end of June of 2014, we had $36 million in the bank in the water district. And this project, this study is based on an assumption that we've got $16 million in cash. I don't know what happened to $20 million of cash in the water district. And before I want to start charging people rate increases, I want to know what happened to that, because I don't see us losing $20 million in a year. I'm looking at revenues and expenses over the last, over, I'm just looking at 2014. These are actual numbers from our financials. Water district had $26.5 in revenues, $27.8 in expenses, but $10 million of that was depreciation. So they had $26 million in revenues and $18 million in expenses where we're out of pocket. I'm not getting this shortfall. It just, I don't see it.
I don't think it's a shortfall. I think it's, this is only a part of the revenue and expenditures that we're looking at tonight. It's not totally inclusive of all of the cash on hand, only the operation.
I don't want to go any further with this until we see exactly how those revenues and expenses are built, where that budget number comes from, because that's driving this entire study. And I don't, I don't believe them. They don't make sense. They don't tie to anything. On that left-hand column on Slide 17, so we can see what makes up those numbers. I can't go to the voters and say, "We ought to charge you 20% more this year," or 7% a year.
The purpose of tonight is to talk about the methodologies that were used, to talk about a go-forward. It's not, no one's going to ask you to vote on this tonight.
I understand that, Doug, but I don't see any point in going further, talking about all these different rate change methodologies if we're not comfortable with the starting numbers. It's just a waste of my time, and I don't want to do it.
Understood. Mr. Matthews, did you have answers to those questions?
Not entirely, but just a little bit. I went over the cash on hand today too, and I taught the finance a little bit. And a lot of those funds are restricted funds, so we can't use them for operations. Some of them are bond debt. There is...
All right. Again, I'm not really interested in just oral explanations about all the missing pieces. I'd like to see all the numbers. I'd like to see what makes up all of our reserves. I'd like to see what builds to that revenue number. And I'd like to know why it doesn't agree with the budget that we approved two months ago. And I'd like to know what makes up those operating expenses, because if we're counting depreciation, we're counting a number twice, and I'm not buying it.
Yeah, and that's not in here. And we'll get to those numbers. Not a problem.
I don't know about anybody else, but the rest of this seems to me to be just a waste of time.
I agree. I think we need to get all the figures together.
If that's council's desire, we can hold off for now, reschedule this for another date.
Please.
To answer those questions and continue with the presentation.
Also, I'd like to add one more thing. If we could also get the personnel numbers in the water district and the other parts of the budget, when you start talking about increases, I actually go the other way. I start talking about decreases. So I think that if there's some fat to cut, I think that's something I'd like to have laid out, as opposed to assuming that water rates increases are the only answer.
And Eric, just to key off of that, if you look at the budgeted expenses, personnel costs in 2014 were $6.9 million. The budget for 2015, they're $7.8 million, went up $900,000. I'm not sure how much time we spent looking at that, but I'd kind of like to know why.
Well, and I, obviously, I was waiting for the presentation to be over, and we only got halfway through it. This is probably longer than any presentation that Sean McGlyte ever put together. And my apology, no, we're, my apologies, but this is a very long PowerPoint presentation. But I'm just curious how Prop 218 plays into this and if we're being asked to ultimately look at increasing rates, whether it be alternative one, alternative two, or some other maturation of those, how Prop 218 plays into that. Meanwhile, every day I turn on the news, a water main breaks in the city of Los Angeles. And for any of us to sit up here and think that that's not going to happen here in the next five, 10 years, we'd be stupid to do so. We know it's going to happen, and if we don't start repairing our own backyard, we're going to have the same problem. And it's just so funny to see that happening, happening in light of such a serious drought, water flowing down the roads at, you know, thousands of gallons a minute. It just, it boggles the mind. But going to the cost of the employees that are attributed to the water district and the pension costs associated with those, those are not, although they may be under the city, they become an obligation and a liability of the water district. And so, you know, whatever goes into that, how does that play into this? Ultimately, I mean, right now, we all budget everything under one roof, but I just, you know, I don't know if anywhere in here that's even discussed when we're asked to look at increasing rates.
It's not in great detail, but those costs are included in these operational costs. So before we completely abandon, I understand the council's desire is to stop the presentation at this point, just to get some of these baseline questions answered. But I would ask if any other council members have additional questions to the extent you've had a chance to look through this or resulting from the first half of the presentation, that we can get answered so that we can be efficient the next time we bring this forward.
I have some questions, and I'll just simply forward them to staff and have an answer. I would like to have at some point the city council then to sit down and look at the figures, where we're at, where we're going, from a point of view of the staff. One of the things that happened right before the end of the fiscal year, we bought $750,000 worth of water meters. They're going to be electronically read. They're going to reduce the need for staff, but no place in here is a reduction of staff. It's going to be more efficient, more effective. We also bought two Jeeps that are right-hand drive. It's going to be more efficient and more effective. None of that is included in the report. I actually thought I would see a report that would have a reduction of employees because of the efficiency and the huge amount of money we're spending to upgrade equipment and all the water meters. Again, this year, we're going to buy another huge amount of water meters, and yet none of that's there. I don't want to go into it tonight. It's probably a relatively easy answer. But it seems like this assumption is made on current personnel with annual cost of living and increases for salary and benefits. You know, I don't know if that's true or not, but these are questions that I'll forward to staff. They can put those in there, and then we can have a better idea. There's also very common for a city that has a huge amount of equipment, and we do invite the council to go to the public works yard and the water department and look at the equipment we have. For a rental rate to be worked out so that Public Works doesn't have four or five skip loaders, and sewer doesn't have four or five skip loaders, and water doesn't have four or five skip loaders, that they actually can rent, from the department owns the equipment, or they can rent from each department. That reduces the cost substantially and also reduces the cost substantially on buying equipment, which is extremely expensive. I'm not going to get into that tonight because I don't have the answers, but I do have a concern, and I'll give you one concern that has been verified. We bought a piece of equipment for one of the departments for about $250,000. And in the last 11 months, that piece of equipment has not moved. And that piece of equipment can be rented. So I would like to see how much equipment do, are we buying it because we have the money? One of the things that individuals in the public have indicated to me is that when we have building development, we have a need to add more employees and more cost, and we increase the rates. And then when we cut back on the water, because we have all the employees, we increase the rates because the water sales go down. But when the water sales go down, and it should go down substantially, with the savings that we're projecting at somewhere around 30% plus or minus, we either have the water rights or we're buying water, and so we're not going to buy the water. So there's a reduction in cost in the purchase, and I don't see that in there anyplace either. So there's a lot of things that are missing. Those questions, I don't want to debate it because it may be simple answers, but I'd like to have the opportunity to put those questions in writing and forward them to the staff, and the staff answer those, and then overlay them over the study to see, are they really in there and I can't find them, or they're not in there and they will have an effect on this? And so I think it's important that we have that opportunity to set this aside until we can get the questions to staff, get them answered, and then have a study session with the council to discuss those issues.
You know, I just have to say too, you can put a projected estimated number as a baseline and apply all kinds of inflation factors to them and get to any kind of result. I'm not really interested in those projections unless they're based on historical data. So what I would like to see is the last five years of actual revenues and expenses out of the water district as a foundation for what we're projecting forward, not just picking some numbers that Mr. Borlman gave you. That just isn't okay with me.
Okay. We'll definitely take your input and revise the presentation to show more of the past and exactly the starting point for these numbers. Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions of the council at all?
I'm sorry.
It is not an open forum, sir. This is questions for the council.
No.
It's not an open forum, sir.
And Doug, I'd just like to see, again, just a reminder, the overall budget.
Overall budget for the Water District, yes. This is, many of the things you ask about have been considered as part of this study. We can do a better job of showing you all the various pieces and parts, and we will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're moving on to public comments. You have two cards.
Jerry fell out a card?
Jerry, yeah, he did.
Now can make the statement?
Wayne Shaw?
This is my first time in a city council meeting ever, I'm ashamed to say. The reason why I'm here tonight is because recently I and other members of my immediate neighborhood over in the area of Nusqually and Balsam received these written warnings of code enforcement infractions. Nobody's happy about it, of course, nobody ever is. But we don't, we not only have an issue and a problem with the subject matter of some of the code enforcement violations that the officer claimed are being cited here, but it was the way that the code enforcement officer presented themselves at the time. So we would like to try to deal with this and find some kind of a common ground and compromise in working with the city code enforcement, whatever entity is involved with this, say the city management level or whatever. But this has got a lot of people riled up. For one thing, we don't believe that some of these codes, whether they're new or modified or been in existence for a long time, have any application to us as general citizens and residents in this city. We are not a planned community development. We don't live in Spring Valley Lake. Many of us have been here for thirty, thirty-five years. We came up here to live in an environment, in a rural environment, quiet and different from what we came from down below. I was born and raised in Fontana. I had lived and grew up in a city, and we came up here to get away from all of that. But progress has brought exactly what we ran from years ago. But now we find ourselves being subject to a new push of a beautification program. But we need to talk about this. We need to open up dialogue. This area that was, particularly area was hit, happens to be one, if not the only, area of its type of development, and that's half-acre lots. The rest of the city's been...
You have thirty seconds?
Beg your pardon?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. The rest of the area's been hit with growth of new planned developments where people are having to live on top of each other. If that's the way they want to live, that's fine. They come up, they buy the home in that condition, in that premises, but we didn't come up here to live like that. So if we could, we'd like somebody to say, can we discuss this? I'm done.
Time's up.
I'm done.
It's probably, since it's your first time, you don't understand public comments the council is prohibited from commenting on, because it, the public doesn't know what you may talk about.
Okay.
My development director is in the back of the room. He'll give you his business card. He's the supervisor over the code enforcement manager, and so he can work with you on those issues, as well as the code enforcement manager himself. They're very interested in working with the residents. Anyone who's received one of those notices is trying to figure out how to appropriately apply all of it to your lot.
All right. Okay. All right, thank you very much, Ed.
Thank you.
Hope we don't have to come back again. But I do want to come back just to participate. We have long been away from this, and it's, this country has gone in the wrong direction, and we gotta get back. Thank you very much. You guys have a nice day.
Jerry Laws.
I had called your name, and you were not here, but I'll allow for you to speak.
Up there at the microphone. I'm pointing at you because you need to do what... They're here nor there, Jerry.
Oh, tall? Well, that was the last one that's here. All right, my name's Jerry Joseph Laws, L-A-W-S, just like when you get a ticket, don't want you to get no tickets, okay? Now, your Honor of the Mayor, Garcia, thank you for showing up at the LDS Samoa, Two Eagles Got Their Eagles That Night, a few weeks ago. You were there, I know, because I saw you. Thank you for showing up for that. Okay, now, what he's talking about, we'll let him schedule a meeting for that. I think we've got a little out of hand. Remember, I've said it before, and I'll say it again, the local government is the closest to the people. If we can't get things done through them, or what needs to be done by the people, assuming it's constitutionally right and God-fearing constitutionally, then we're in trouble. Let's see here. Oh, there we go. I get my paper. This is the whole valley, not just us. Homicide, assault, and fraud on a regular basis, I got a whole settlement here. I want gun rights, I want open carry in this city. We'll work on the county, and we'll work on the government. I want open carry. They can't have a cop or a sheriff on each border, on each house, watching themselves. And the only reason they exist in the first place is because you and I hung our Kentucky rifle to the fireplace and hired ourselves a sheriff. So just remember that. Now, we want this, we got, in God we trust. We always have the pledge of allegiance, we always have a prayer before that. I appreciate that. And we didn't fight in Nam and Korea for this nonsense. So you are close to the people. I did talk to the people out there a few minutes ago on this, since they're our water company now. I did not vote for the city taking over the water company. I'd been in the area for three-some years, but since we did, we did. Next year, you're gonna have probably all the water you need. You'll probably be up this here, in your backyard with it. So I want storage tanks up, or whatever we have to have, or reservoirs or whatever, so the state can't come down and tell you that you can't have it in our local city. Now, enough is enough, and that's all I can say. Of course, I am running for U.S. Senator, box seat, but that's beside the point. You can't say nothing about that. So thank you for being there, Ms. Mayor. You did a good job. You did a nice presentation, and the rest of them did, too. And I think I got it all done. Boy Scouts, the mayor...
You have thirty seconds?
Okay, and the criminal situation. You get the criminal situation under control right now, and then I'll say goodbye. We have a communist in the White House, most of Congress, and most is Sacramento. But this is a God-fearing nation, and we'll do our part, and you will, too, or you'll be hanging from the nearest tree. And by the way, if the founding fathers were alive today, you couldn't hang your hat or your cover on a tree, because there'd be so many traitors hanging from them. But I'm sure whatever church you belong to, you pay your tithes off.
Time is up, Mr. Laws.
All right? Take care. Now, remember, if your husband isn't good to you, you remind him to be good to you.
Thank you. Next, we have reports from City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Just a couple of announcements. Our August first Shred Fest was very successful again. National Night Out, I know most of you were able to make it, maybe all of you. It's a big event, we had quite a few people there. We shut down Civic Drive to hold that event, proud of that. Very successful, that was August fourth. Next time, we're gonna be shutting down Civic Drive for an event, will be the Fall Festival on August third coming up. That's our, easily our biggest event of the year. We're expecting twenty, twenty-five, thirty, maybe thirty thousand people to attend. I'm sorry, I said August, I meant October. October third, it's always the first Saturday in October. It'll be huge, you need to be there. And that's all I have. I recently celebrated, I don't know about celebrated, but ticked over my thirteenth anniversary working for the city of Victorville. I'm thrilled to be here, but I don't hold a candle to Ms. Bates, who today happens to be her twenty-ninth anniversary with the city of Victorville. And I got you again, Carol.
I'm a dinosaur.
Okay, now we have reports from council members.
I do, just a couple of comments. You know, I traverse Amargosa Road on a daily basis, and last week I finally had it and shot an email to Doug and said, "You know what? I don't know what they're doing, but it's gotta stop." He conversed with Southwest Gas and Brian Gangler, our city engineer, and I believe it's being addressed. I appreciate all the work that you've done, Doug, as well as you, Brian. You know, they've torn up our road, basically, and I expect them to put it back to where it was at. Our roads aren't in the greatest condition as it is, but to have a utility come in and tear it up and make it even worse is very troubling to me. And Amargosa Road is probably one of the most traveled roads in the city of Victorville. So I just would ask that you guys keep your due diligence on that and make sure that they put it back to where it needs to be. At the next council meeting, I'd ask the council, and I'll put on the agenda, to support Charter Communications acquisition of Time Warner Cable. You know, I think that's a good, a good deal for Dodger fans. I'm an Angel fan, but at the end of the day, I think that that'll provide a lot of service here locally to people, so I'd ask us to consider supporting that. In my role as sandbag president, over the next week, on Friday, the Lynnwood Road Grade Separation Project ribbon cutting, be there with Supervisor Robert Lovinggood, Chair of Supervisors, James Ramos, and other folks, Mayor Hackbarth McIntyre, to open that project. We were there, I think, just a little over a year ago to break ground on that. And then San Bernardino Transit Center, down in your neck of the woods where you work, will be opening on Monday. So that's another project that will be opening. And then the mayor asked me today, along with some of the rest of us, participate in Dogs and Politics Day, and it just so happened that my family, my wife and I and her daughter, we just adopted a dog from Victor Valley Animal Protective League about two weeks ago, Marley, a little black terrier mix. We're not sure exactly what it is, but we did adopt the dog, and so be more than happy to participate in that, so looking forward to it.
Be no other business before the council, this meeting is adjourned.
Love dogs. Yeah, remember yours.